And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, July 21st, 2016. First thing we usually do is Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, will call the role.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. We are joined this evening with County Council, Mr. Stephen Madcor, and Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. I'll start with the role. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Chair Ledlow.
Here. All please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll announce that the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And Mr. Paul Reynolds has already been introduced. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay. The Housing Authority Consent Agenda, we have approval to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Town Center Greens Limited Partnership by its general partner, Central City Concern, for administering 21 project-based vouchers at Clackamas Town Center Courtyard Apartments. And we have approval to enter into a housing assistance payment contract with Town Center Greens Limited Partnership for 21 project-based vouchers to Town Center Courtyard Apartments. And that's the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
All right, Commissioners, I assume you don't want to pull this item. Commissioner Reynolds.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Reynolds with the motion. Commissioner Smith was the second to further discussion. Commissioner Bernard.
Just wanted to say we had an opportunity to tour the facility the other day, and it was, it's a great facility and provides lots of opportunity for those people who have had challenging lives and might give them the opportunity to turn their lives around. So it was a great, great opportunity to visit the one, two, and three-bedroom sites.
Commissioner Smith.
I was going to say this for later, but I'll say it now since you did. Yeah, Jim, that was a very nice opening they had. We toured the bedrooms, like you said, and they used materials that were very new and modern and just really interesting to see. I loved it. The, this facility will house 90 adults who might be out on the street because they come in from mental illness and drug and alcohol addictions, and they've been reunited with their children who normally would be in foster care. And there was about, this will house about 90 adults and 100 kids. Definitely supported housing because there will be counselors on site to make sure these people are doing what they need to do to be successful in life. And that would be probably abstain and get their medical health treatment and become employed. And some of them are employed. We listened to one inspiring story from a 23-year-old woman who will be reunited with her son after she got into some trouble, and it was very inspiring. She's been in the program. She's been educated, or I should say trained, and now she's going to be working at this facility to help other peoples. And they do pay rent, although it's much lower. But I think this is a good step up and just one small way to prevent homelessness in Clackamas County. Wish we had more facilities like these, but this is a start.
These facilities are very expensive to build. The units, 60 of them, cost $15 million. That's $250,000 a unit. So affordable housing unfortunately is not affordable to build, or else we'd be building it a lot faster. But this is a consortium of different entities that have helped put this together for these people. And the more we can address, especially like Commissioner Smith said, the mental illness factor, let alone the drug and alcohol problems that people have, the better off these people will be, and they won't be on the streets. So, good stuff. All right, are we ready for the question? Mary.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye. Passes 4-0. I'll announce the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board reconvene as the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. It's time, thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
And it's time for Citizens Communication. I'll call forward Les Poole and Shirley Morgan. Now Shirley Morgan, rather than have all of her close friends there talk for three minutes apiece, I've been, I've determined I'm going to give her 10 minutes to represent them all. We'll start with Mr. Poole.
If I could get away with it, I'd donate one of my minutes. I'll try and be done in two because they've got more things on the agenda. Something that I noticed in the paper, in the Tribune, that I just wanted to share. Les Poole, obviously I live in Clackamas County. It says "Tiger Could Kill Southwest Max Line," Trimet Chief says. The project will stop if voters in that city reject it in November. So the message that started here in Clackamas County about voting before you borrow hundreds of millions of dollars is resonating elsewhere. And I think the message that started here a few years ago is probably why there was some accountability and questions about the CRC, and we got into that fiasco. So as we move forward, we can't afford any more of that, and I'm certainly not saying the county's responsible for that. What the county is responsible for is recently completing a great road project instead of bungling it like the CRC. I brought a picture. I walked in here a couple of years ago, set that photo up here, and I saved it for you. That's the Sunrise Corridor overpass under construction. I do want to compliment everybody that worked on that. It was a big endeavor. Phase one is being wrapped up. I was there for the dedication. What it's going to mean is more than you or I being able to get around the county, it's going to save a lot of trucking time, and it's going to help keep companies, distribution companies, like Fred Meyer's in Clackamas County, with good jobs that we need. So I just want to thank the county for making that happen, and I'm looking forward to the completion of the project.
Wish I could donate that minute, but they won't let me.
Well, you're not going to. I should say that, you know, Fred Meyer stated at the opening that they'll be able to save half a million dollars on fuel by having that brief bypass that they have there. So that's quite amazing. They said that they would be passing that on to their customers, which is great stuff. But all of us were at the grand opening. It was great to see that open, and remember that that was the first freeway, expressway to open in 30 years in the Portland metropolitan area. And we need more of that, and frankly, a little less of light rail. You know, this, thank you. The Southwest Corridor is expected to cost $2.5 billion, billion. And I said to Metro Today down at J-PAC that that $2.5 billion would take care of the major choke points in the Portland metropolitan area, that being 217, 205, the Rose Corridor, and the Boone Bridge in Wilsonville. It'd take care of all that. But instead, we're putting it into light rail yet again. So I gave them my opinion today. Thank you for that. Shirley, you've got 10.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan, the founder of the Citizens for Public Safety, Quality of Life, and Property Values. You've heard that name before. Commissioners Schreeder and Smith have indicated that we should bring our recommendations for amending marijuana land use. So today, we are doing just that. We have put together a 93-page document that includes a number of discretionary amendment requests. This document provides an executive summary, a review of five commercial marijuana case studies, health and safety concerns, and our proposed amendments. Since I am unable to cover this in 10 minutes, we are asking for a meeting with Don Krupp and Mike McAllister, we met with them a couple of weeks ago, to review the other proposals that we are making. Today, I will highlight some key issues. I had a beautiful PowerPoint to show you so you could get some good visuals, but I'm just going to have to accentuate my voice and give you the looksee through my heart. So first, citizens have requested an immediate moratorium until all public safety, quality of life, and property value standards have been met. I will review today an introduction, the five case studies, and a highlight list of our key top issues that are concerning to us. Currently, Clackamas County has 155 marijuana land use applications and is the second highest in the state in terms of applications. 98% of those applications are for marijuana production. Mooreing, Sandy, Oregon City, Eagle Creek, Canby, Beaver Creek, Clackamas being the highest. If you look at Mooreing in a three-mile radius, it has almost taken over the entire area with production, wholesaling, extraction center, and many unknown medical marijuana grow sites. As a reminder, there are over 3,448 medical marijuana grows in Clackamas County with Oregon City, Milwaukee, Sandy, and Damascus leading the way. A review of the case studies include, number one, 13471 South Leland Road. The site is a four-acre EFU parcel leasing to five LLCs, 10 feet off of property lines. There are six 30-by-100-foot greenhouses, two 60-by-83 primary processing buildings, 44 projected parking spaces, no water, no well, no plumbing for sanitary. The impacts are a commercial industrial complex in a rural residential farming area. It is blocking views. There are code violations with illegal excavation. There is a 55-plant outdoor illegal grow before even receiving an OLLC license, OLCC license, and simply a loss of property values. The site tour, if you were to take a drive down Leland Road, you would see five mailboxes being posted for one site, seven-to-eight-foot high fence blocking views, and again, a 55-illegal outdoor marijuana grow that is in public view from the neighbor's home. Our proposed amendments are, please consider one license per site or a maximum grow canopy. Restrict the blocking of views in some type of ordinance or amendment. Require septic plumbing and water on site. Require applicant to provide annual water testing so that we can measure the potential damage that will go into the well systems there because there is no water waste disposal requirements. Number two, 23254 South Ridge Road in Beaver Creek. It's a timber zone. The site is a 30,000-square-foot horse arena that's being rezoned to a commercial. The impacts are upgrading an ag road to commercial use. There's no septic or sanitary requirements that are being required. There are no marijuana waste disposal requirements. There's no annual updated county assessor's office land use assessment with upgrading of the building worth $100,000. The taxes over the last three years haven't been upgraded at all. So if we're going to make additional funding, then we should have some kind of plan to reassess those properties who are refurbishing those kinds of facilities. Land use permit for commercial being issued for industrial complexes. Front road commercial access in a rural residential road is making the property, the citizens very angry. The site tour is simply a commercial trucks accessing a commercial structure through an agricultural access. The county should have required this to be updated because it's causing major damage in terms of water runoff and running into other people's properties. Again, no annual real estate evaluations have been made. Community acceptance is pretty low. We're proposing that you require all commercial industrial standards to be implied if you're going to allow them to be in those zones. Require annual tax assessors evaluation. Again, require septic plumbing and water on site. And there should be a marijuana mitigation fee for the cost of permitting and enforcing. And you might want to consider a police surcharge would also be in order. Number three, 28752 Southeast Kelso Road. It is an EFU parcel, three acres, turning a 22-stable horse arena into a commercial industrial complex. The impacts, excessive tree removal. 60-to-80, 40-to-60-foot-high fir and pine trees were removed the first two months. The site tour, it impacted the neighbors greatly. They vacated their home, and they haven't been in it since. The community acceptance is nil. Proposed amendments, restrict EFU properties and canopy size to five acres and up rather than three acres and under. It's so impacting. Number four, 10770 Southeast 362nd in Mooreing. 20-acre EFU pasture surrounded by RRFF5 zoning that is turning it into a commercial industrial zone by putting in 36 marijuana grow barns. They are industrial-looking barns. The impacts is that, again, it's a commercial industrial complex surrounded by rural residential farming areas. There are kids and families that live directly across the street from this facility, and it is going to increase traffic and have a significant effect and impact. The community is impacted by this greatly. So we're proposing, again, the consistent theme, please consider one license per site or maximum grow canopy that will help to restrict the traffic flow where there are lots of families and children. Number four, number five actually, is 26900 Southeast Forrester Road. I like this one on your behalf, Mr. Bernard. It's a timber zone. It was proposed 18 greenhouses, indoor/outdoor grows, 10 feet off property lines, six 30-by-100-foot greenhouses, and there is a humongous fence that has been wrapped around this property, and it looks like a prison compound, which once was a pasture. So we're proposing for this simply that you allow some kind of tree barrier or require a tree barrier that is built around that. You have talked about this a lot, but yet there has never been any solutions brought forward to help mitigate that issue. Those are the five case studies. In the packet, you will see these properties demonstrated. You will get a site tour via this packet and see all the additional details that I cannot share with you today. We have lined up basically what we'd like to see and what we're proposing, what the county's current regulations are, what Deschutes County's regulations are, as an example of a county in another part of the state, and as well, what OLCC is recommending. So we've ran our recommendations right down the middle. As an example, we would like to see the 50 dB to 30 dB on the property line. When you get on a five-acre parcel, and it is narrow, 200 feet wide, and you put your greenhouses 10 feet off the property line, in one case, basically, it is 60 feet from the bedroom window of the neighbors. So sound is going to definitely be heard. On top of our existing list, there are some major issues that we feel is important, and I know that a lot of this was the legality of the issue with marijuana, but we would like to see that all existing medical marijuana grow sites come into compliance within six months. Deschutes County is requiring this in their district, so we know it can be done. No land use applications should receive building permits without first receiving their OLCC license. This is happening in other counties in the state in which they will not issue the building permits until OLCC picks up the phone and gives them a call and says, hey, they got it. That way, there's not a bunch of debris left if they've built out, which they all are building out before they even have their licenses. So, pretty risky, but they're risky people. I would ask that you would do a 1,500-foot neighbor notification because this is a huge problem for most citizens who are experiencing this. A thousand-foot setback for all marijuana production facilities from all types of schools. We're seeing marijuana production facilities showing up close by to school areas. And we would ask that the county consider site visits to evaluate traffic and environmental impacts prior to issuing a land use application so that you can see what's going on. With that, you will see our rest of our concerns in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, it sounds like you've got some interesting suggestions, and not all of them are bad, that's for sure. But this is something I appreciate Mr. Krupp and Mr. McAllister meeting with you to go over them, and I'm sure we'll have a chance to review them. And I appreciate your hard work, all the people in the audience, their hard work towards this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to go on to a public discussion item. Now, this is, this is a discussion item regarding the proposed fuel tax measure on November 16th ballot, and Barb Cartmill, Department of Transportation and Development, will have a PowerPoint. And by the way, there is no action on this item. We will have a public hearing scheduled Thursday, August 11th, 2016, to refer this item to the voters. This will be at the 10:00 AM regular scheduled business meeting. So, Don, yes, usually you do the intros. Go ahead.
Okay, well, this is a public discussion item, and it's an opportunity for the public to speak to and talk about a proposed fuel tax measure on the November 2016 ballot. We have Barbara Cartmill, our Director of Transportation and Development, here to give you a presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Krupp, basically, as you've both very eloquently said, I'm here to just give you a brief update on where we are on our transportation maintenance funding efforts. So, in May of 2016, the BCC put an advisory vote with a ballot question. This is, shall the county pursue a vehicle registration fee for a limited amount of years to pay for deferred road maintenance? We were very pleased with the response, and that was a whopping 68%, which for potential ballot measures and taxes is pretty high, and the answer was yes. So with that guidance, we went ahead, and since it was a county-wide vote, went ahead and pulled the cities together, and you folks met with the cities to discuss some of the options that might be available to do that. You looked at a $25 a year vehicle registration fee. You looked at fuel tax. You looked at limited durations, and you talked about identifying specific project lists. After you met with the cities, we went ahead and did the same thing with our local, not established jurisdictions, but our CPOs, our hamlets, and our villages, and shared the same information with us. The cities' recommendation to the Board was an eight-cent fuel tax with a seven-year duration and identified project lists. The cities themselves would determine the level of detail where they were involved. And they also suggested a 60-40 split of the revenues that would be generated, 60% going to the county and 40% going to the cities. So, after hearing the recommendation, the Board met in a study session and moved forward with the suggestion that you have a six-cent gas tax. That, as you can see from the slide we've put up, estimate, is estimated to raise $9 million a year. For a total of seven years, that would be $63 million. The funds would be split with the cities, as I mentioned before. So the county itself would net close to $40 million for the seven-year duration, 37.8, with another $25 million going to the cities. We have identified seven paving packages all over the county. We'll get to a map here in a second that shows a little bit about that, with the lion's share going strictly to paving and strictly to maintenance on the roads, no new capital. We have thrown in another $3.7 million for safety improvements as well. And the cities can use the funds in any manner they wish, as long as it's consistent with state law when you use gas or fuel taxes. So, let me get to my little list here. We've tried to color-code some of the paving packages to give folks an idea of where the county, anyway, has gone. Package A, let's see if I can, I don't think the little light shows up very well there, is the red package. And I'm just going to point out a few of these so folks can get an idea of how we have dispersed them throughout the county. We wanted to try to get a balanced distribution of the packages over the seven years. The decisions, though, on which roads are made vary carefully, and there's a number of items that they look at. We keep a very well-defined pavement management system going in the road department. So, you know, road condition, a number of cars traveled in years since it's last been repaired, and the condition of the base, and all kinds of things go into which roads would get addressed first. But this also gives a general idea that we would be working throughout the county, trying to give every area at least a smattering of road improvements with this initial package out. Again, Package A is pretty much Beaver Creek. I do want to point out that it is Beaver Creek, south of Oregon City. As soon as I went out with this once before, somebody came over and said Beaver Creek doesn't need to be paved. Well, it was the other end of Beaver Creek, so I wanted to point that out. Package B is the lighter green. It's just to the east of Beaver Creek, and that's, they're calling that the Highland Package. It involves Ferguson and Lower Highland Road. If we look at the gold, that's up in the urban area, a lot of stuff right there in that oat field, Aldercrest, Oak Grove area to support a lot of, that's a lot of housing in that area. Package D is the black, and it's kind of interesting, it's showing up maybe purple on the map, but it's, it's kind of dances around a little. There's a little bit of, a little bit of it up on Johnson Creek, and then there's some down in South County, right by the tail of Beaver Creek, by the red. That involves Malala Avenue as well. The pink area is Canby and Estacada. Then we've got some dark green just south of that, that is Canby Markham. And then the last one is the blue. The light blue is back up north and involves some of the, like 122nd in there, and then goes heads east out to Hubbard and Kelso. So I think it's pretty well distributed within the county for those, those first seven years of effort that we might be getting going with. And just to sort of recap again, the countywide total per year is the $9 million, of which the county would receive $5.4 million, and the city's portion would be $3.6. And over the seven years, it would be a total generation of $63 million. And I believe, after that, if we move forward with this decision, we've got a couple timelines to share. By August 19th, we have to have a ballot title in for the November election. By August 26th, any challenges to the ballot measure have to be made. And then by August 30th, any arguments in favor for the ballot booklet have to be in. And with that, I guess I would turn it back to you for your discussion and testimony from anybody that might have questions as well.
Thank you, Barbara. Yeah, actually, the cities did come up with the eight cents, and they also asked for a 50-50 split. That wasn't going to happen, and we lowered it, of course, to six cents because this is kind of a test case about trust with the public. Do they believe that we will keep our word? And sunset this? Well, it'll certainly be in that which is proposed to the voters, and so that'll lock us in. Do they believe that we will use this money judiciously? And, well, I believe we will. You know, it's well said, and this has been said for a period of years, every year we drop $17.5 million in need to maintain 1,400 miles of road. That $25 million would be added to this total year, seven year, of nearly $40 million to allow us to do more on our roadway surfaces. I've talked to a lot of cities, and I've called all the mayors today and, you know, asked them if they had any concern, and the grand majority do not. And they, in fact, they asked us to do several tweaks, which we did on Tuesday, to the IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement, and it appears like they're all going to be supporting this, possibly except for Oregon City and Gladstone for inexplicable reasons. Now, we're going to open it up to the public and ask that they come forward, and we'll start with Les Poole and Bill Osborne.
I want to thank the folks for coming. It's an awesome day, and it's kind of tempting to go play, but this is one of those issues that's gone on too long. So I appreciate folks being here, and I do want to thank the staff. I mean, it sounds like I'm buttering them up today, but you guys have stayed after it. I've been one of the biggest proponents of dealing with this, and I'm not someone that generally goes for fees or tax increases. I was out there making sure that we didn't pay for Portland's long-neglected bridge. So as someone that's tried to drive this conversation to a better place, I'm pleased that we did have an advisory vote. It would have been great to just be done with it in May, but at this point, we've got an opportunity. got an opportunity. I don't know if we can get six cents out of the public, maybe four cents, maybe five cents. The public's feeling stretched out there, and I'm not here to play with your numbers, but we don't want to ask for a little too much and end up with nothing come November. I won't bring up IP-28. Oh, I did. That has got to be defeated. I don't care who you are, I don't care what party you belong to, if you never voted in your life, it's not going to work, and it's going to take money away from everything, not just roads. It's going to fund a couple of long, long, long-term problems, but it's not going to fix our roads. So, county's got to make this happen, and I'm hopeful that we come up with something that works. I also would point out that the budget found a good down payment this year and last year. We're trying to do more to fund the roads up front, so whatever you're asking for in November is lower, and it shows that there's been some effort to try and squeeze out and find money for the roads, because the last thing I'll say about this is that it's real obvious, we've heard it a million times, that in the back of the room, there's a big poster that says, "This is like the foundation of your house is crumbling, and you can keep patching the roof, you can keep adjusting the doors, you know, you can keep pretending that you don't need to jack that house up and fix the foundation." And our roads are going to be that way. We're going to be at a point where, if we don't finally address them, we will be really sorry in the future. So, stay after it, and I look forward to the hearing that's coming up in August. You know, that's twice I've spoken in less than three minutes, so...
That is so rare.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Osborne.
Howdy. Well, let's see, I wrote a little bit of stuff here to keep me on topic.
Come a little closer to the mic?
Sorry.
You can pull it closer.
I'll actually pull it out to you, yeah. There you go.
Is that a little better?
Much better.
All right. So, to participate, cities have been asked to pass a resolution. Sounds nice and friendly, but as I understand, what you mean to say is sign off on this tax and receive 40%, or don't sign off and receive nothing, which to me sounds more like extortion rather than an agreement with cities. This is going to be the largest tax in the state, to my understanding at least, in looking at the Oregon.gov page on taxes, or gas taxes, short of state and federal, but the only other counties that were listed on there was Washington County with a one-cent tax and Altonoma County with a three-cent tax. You talked about public trust, and the public doesn't trust that our money's being spent properly. Down in Gladstone, I know, for instance, just since I've gotten a little involved down there, some of the stuff that's going on just leaves you wondering and scratching your head why it is that government spends our money so carelessly, and that's one of those things that I think that people are going to remember in November. I think that the roads need to be taken care of. I mean, that's obvious. But I think a six-cent tax, when we compare that to other counties, is twice what any other county is in the state of Oregon. The other questions, you know, and concerns I have is this lasts for seven years, and then it's supposed to go away? And the amount that it's going to bring in, on the page here, it said there was a $265 million gap between the amount of road maintenance needed and available funds, and this isn't even going to touch it. So, we're still going to have hundreds of millions of dollars at issue here, and I'm not sure what you guys are going to do to take care of that. And that's about all I have to say.
Commissioner Smith?
I'd be much more in favor of, you know, a three-cent tax, just more along the lines with what other cities and counties have done in the state of Oregon.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Well, it's interesting, you say you want a three-cent tax, and then you criticize us because it's not enough money to fill our gap. So I'm confused about what you're saying regarding that.
I didn't say I want a three-cent tax. I'm saying I would understand it more. Nobody likes taxes, but there's that point where we realize we have to pay some taxes.
May I finish, sir? Okay, I think you made your point. The reason why this is in writing is because when the county commissioners, all five of us, sat down with most of the citizens in attendance, the city says, "We want an agreement in writing," basically because they didn't trust us, that we would give them 40%. Okay? That's why it's in writing. Well, as, when, writer of the contract, and the county has taken really the lead in a situation that's been with us for 10 to 15 years, and we decided to take the lead and ask the citizens if they felt our roads were in bad enough shape that they'd pay an extra six cents. And by the way, as you remember, Barbara Cartmill said, "They wanted eight cents." They wanted a lot more money on that. We said, "No, we're not going to do that." In fact, many of us wanted a vehicle registration fee, because we thought that was more fair. But the cities demanded, demanded from us that they wanted a fuel tax. And the reason why we said yes was, is because we need the votes in the cities to pass this. If this vote was left to unincorporated Clackamas County, of which they all drive on our roads, it probably would not pass. So, we sweetened the pot and says, "You know, cities, you get 40%." Now, for the town of, city of Oregon City, for instance, that's $500,000, and that's a lot of money they can pave their roads with. For the city of Mulala, a very small town, it's $140,000, and they can't wait to do that, because right now, they're paving a lot of their roads with their own financing. When we wrote the contract that the cities wanted, we said, "Sure, you need to support this. You need to list, you need to come out in favor of this and agree with it." Or, yeah, you won't, because what they would do is then, they would say, "Oh, we're against what the county wants to do, we're going to defeat this tax." You know, you can't have it both ways. You can't have, on one hand, cities demanding from the county that they do something for their favor, and the county coming back and saying, "Oh, you guys are okay, I understand." It has nothing to do with extortion, it has nothing to do with hurt feelings, it has something to do with getting the business done that I think the citizens of this county may support. Now, if the folks don't want the roads fixed, then they won't vote for the tax. I think six cents is probably very doable. You were talking about one of the largest taxes. Well, I believe the city of Portland just passed in the primary a 10-cent gas tax. So, that is not true.
That's the city of Portland, that's...
I mean, counties, counties, yeah. So, in that, well, Portland takes up most of Altonoma County, so, you know, I think it's different tax. And Clackamas County has 1,400 miles of roads. We have more roads than any county in the state of Oregon. We also have 1.3 million acres, where many people come from out of area to go play in our forests and our snow and our rivers, and a lot of things that other jurisdictions rely on our roads for. You know, if we could charge every person that comes into the county a fee to use our roads, boy, wouldn't that be something? We'd be more rich, and we'd know what to do with it, but that's not how we do our roads. We know that this is going to be a shortfall from the overall need, but we're hoping that other government agencies, possibly the federal government, and their, you know, they collect a federal gas tax as well, and the state government during this next legislative session will possibly do something to help supplement us. But, we cannot wait for other governments to pay our bills for us. We need to take the bull by the horns, chart our own destiny, and make our own decisions. If the people don't want to go down that road, it's their decision. We tried, we did not implement a tax unilaterally. We asked the voters for it, which I always said I would do when I was running for office. I would ask the voters if they want this. We could have implemented a vehicle registration fee, but I do not think that's the right thing to do without the voters being asked. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Osborne, you said this is a first-time testifying. I want to thank you for coming forward, and I really appreciate people the first time. They probably get a little more nervous than they need to be. I mean, you made some good points, and it is a matter of trust, and we have to develop that trust with people. You know, we've, we're not required to give that 40% of gas tax to our cities, but as Commissioner Smith said, we do need their support, and it didn't, we didn't do that very easily. We decided to do it because they claim they need it, and we believe that they do, and they can offer a lot of support. We gave some caveats with this intergovernmental agreement, that they would support us by resolution, and detail to their citizen what they intend to do with the money. And I think that's always good and transparent, to let the citizens know what they intend to do with their dollars in their particular city. So we look forward to putting support to the voters and promoting it, but, you know, it may ultimately fail. I hope it doesn't, but we believe it's a prudent and responsible thing to do, is to ask. We've been, you know, in a sense, kicking the can down the road for three years now. And it's time to pose the question and ask, and if they refuse, we'll continue probably to ask, because otherwise, the roads fall apart, and they'll still blame us after that. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I agree. I mean, we were, we all had planned to talk about a vehicle registration fee, and the cities did want the gas tax. You know, we have a responsibility to the future generations that we maintain our investments, and we can only do that with the support of a gas tax, because we can't use ad valorem tax, or property taxes. But I think that, you know, it's nowhere close to what we actually need. All we can hope is that tourism in Clackamas County is really good, and all those people are buying gas in Clackamas County, and that money comes back, because this is an estimate, I assume. It has to be an estimate, because we don't actually know, you know, for certain that, you know, people will be buying gas in Clackamas County. It may, some people, well, people claim this many times over the years, that, so they won't come here and buy their gas. Well, I don't necessarily think that's true. But, you know, we have to invest in these assets, and if we don't, frankly, future generations will have to. So, I'm glad it's on the ballot, and we're doing what we're asked to do, and that's to put it on the ballot.
I do appreciate you guys putting it to a vote of the people. I think that is the right thing to do. Obviously, if they voted in, then I don't know what I'm talking about. And in your response to Portland's tax, I don't live in Portland by choice, and never would.
Us too, Bill.
Right.
Thank you both. Next to Thelma Hagan-Miller and Scott Harger, it could be Harger.
Harger.
Yeah, G, okay, good. Harger.
Either one of you can go first.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagan-Miller. I am a resident of the unincorporated area of our county, known as Oak Grove. I am here to speak to the road maintenance issue and to compliment our County Department of Transportation and Development. I had occasion about six months ago to drive the highway from the Washington coast to I-5, east of Longview. The night was dark and rainy. What I encountered was a very unsafe driving situation because of the sporadic striping identifying the lanes and sides of the highway. People don't necessarily realize such a safety issue as lane striping and fog lines as a part of our road maintenance program, but it is. I will be voting yes on the road maintenance ballot measure as part of my belief in the safety of our county roads. I am looking forward to the list of projects being proposed and to the sunset date of seven years. As a senior citizen, still driving, I might add, safety is the number-one place. I am willing to direct my limited dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma. And a fellow Wilsonvilleite.
You what?
Oh, the next gentleman is from Wilsonville.
Oh, okay.
My name's Scott Harger, and I just have a few brief comments. It must be hard to be in your shoes, and quite honestly, that's why most of us don't run for office. Everyone wants good roads, good parks, and social services for those who really need them, but few of us want tax increases. Most of us feel like we pay a lot in taxes, so the government must have all the money it needs. As a real estate investor, I care a lot about the condition of roads and understand their impact on property values and the livability of the communities. As such, I pay attention to the issue of road maintenance funding, but many people don't, and they'd like you to just make do with what you have. I get the fact that maintenance and construction costs continue to increase, and yet revenues haven't, and that it costs about 10 times more to rebuild a road than to do preventative maintenance. Other counties have supplemented stagnant state and federal funds with local resources. It's time to do the same in Clackamas County. I applaud you for doing what is right for this community and for taking the steps to finally do what needs to be done, and I think six cents is nothing. Anybody who's using the roads should pay a little extra to do it.
We, you know, if you weigh out either the $25 vehicle registration fee or the six-cent tax, it literally can mean 25 bucks to somebody over a period of year. And you're right, that doesn't amount to much, it shouldn't prevent them from voting for it.
I can't believe that that would cripple anyone.
No, it wouldn't. Well, I appreciate your comments, and, you know, it was said, you know, previously, what do you do after seven years? Well, then, hopefully, we've garnered the trust of the public, and we come back again and ask them for money, proving that we had kept our word for the previous batch of money that we used. I appreciate you both testifying, and that's, not Les Poole, you're not using your full three minutes here, so I'm quite amazed at that. Thank you both. I appreciate you showing up tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that is our public discussion, and Barbara Cartmill, thank you. There is some, do you have those maps?
On the table back here.
Yeah, these maps are very detailed on all the packages A through G, and with an explanation on the back. So if you'd like a copy of that, especially the people that testified, be sure to pick one up before you leave. They're over there by the door, she's standing right there. Yeah, there they are. If you'd like some of those, that'd be great. And now, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda for July 25th, 21st. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a subrecipient agreement amendment with Toto Hutos for youth drug and alcohol prevention, Canby, Sandy, Estacada, and Mulala. Approval of an amendment to the subrecipient agreement with Toto Hutos, Inc., for Prevent-Net Community Schools. Approval of amendment to the subrecipient agreement with Northwest Family Services for youth drug and alcohol prevention, Oregon City, Gladstone, and Milwaukee. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Education Service District for focused childcare networks. Approval of an agency services contract with Compass Group USA, Bateman Senior Meals, for food service for five Clackamas County Older American Act Nutrition Program meal sites. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement, amendment number three, with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division, for the provision of the Oregon Money Management Program in Clackamas County. Approval of a construction contract with GT Excavating for the ADA ramps and crosswalk improvement projects. Approval of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuument of Care Programming Grant Agreement. Under Finance, approval of a contract with Portland Real Estate Solutions, Portland Construction Solutions, for the building envelope replacement at the Emergency Operations Center. And approval of an authorization to purchase 14 Dodge Charger Police Patrol Vehicles from Wentznel Motors Company. Under County Administration, a board order authorizing the sale of county general obligation bonds to replace obsolete emergency radio communication system. Under County Council, approval of a release of deed restriction for property located in Lake Oswego. Under the Juvenile Department, approval to apply for the Bureau of Land Management Financial Assistant Opportunity Grant to fund juvenile offender work crews. Approval of amendment number one and two to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon for Title IV-E funding. Under Technology Services, approval of a right-of-way franchise agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the City of Lake Oswego for the use of city right-of-way. And approval to enter into a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Lake Oswego School District for dark fiber network. And under Tourism and Cultural Affairs, approval of amendment number three and renewal number four to the contract documents between, with Borders Perin Norander for tourist... four to the contract documents between, with Borders Perin Norander for Tourism Marketing Agency Services. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, do you want to remove any of these items or have them explained to you? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes three zero. The minimum that we need to pass anything, I might add. So, and now it's the most exciting time of the evening when our county administrator gets to explain all the good works of Clackamas County or a portion thereof, right?
That, that's true. So, you know, I've been working to try to figure out how to make these more thrilling and more exciting. And I'm hoping to be able to put it to music in the very near future for you. But I, I do have a couple of items just to share. And, you know, as of 12:01 a.m., Sunday morning, the City of Damascus became the city formerly known as the Damascus, or the place formerly known as Damascus. And of course, that has meant that the county has assumed a series of responsibilities, including the assimilation of the remaining six city employees for the City of Damascus. Responsibility for the management of what remains of the city's finances, a large share of which, after the course of a year, will be returned to the taxpayers who were once city residents in the City of Damascus. And the acquisition of assets that belong to the city, including city-owned public works property as well as green space and open space that belonged to the city. And also, the, basically assuming the stewardship of the records and technology systems that once belonged to the city. I want to say that this is a, sort of a once-in-a-lifetime experience. For us, this doesn't happen very often that you see a, an established city disincorporate. And we've had 60 days to effect the implementation of it since the primary vote. I'm happy to say that the process so far has been very smooth and seamless and I'm grateful for the hard work of all of our staff in County Council's office, County Administration, Employee Services, Technology Services, Transportation and Development. Just throughout county government, folks have been able to make this work. We are already receiving mail that has been originally delivered to the City Hall offices and we will have an employee from, from the City of Damascus in the County Commissioner's office for the next 12 months who will actually be able to help us with that mail and the email that comes in. And we have been directing folks to, who ordinarily would be calling Damascus City Hall to contact the county offices here directly to get their answers to the questions that they may have. So again, I just want to express my appreciation for the hard work of our staff and I also want to welcome the six employees from the City of Damascus to the county family here. So, look forward to that. The last item I have, you talked a little bit about this earlier and it has to do with the Town Center Courtyards and I just wanted to thank our Health, Housing and Human Services Department, the Community Development Division, Behavioral Health Division, the Social Services Division and the Housing Authority, all worked together and worked together with you, the Board, in helping to pull this project together. And I think we all should be really proud of what's been put together here. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the second most exciting time is when the Commissioners get to give a little talk and so Commissioner Smith is going to start that out.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I had a delightful time this Saturday out at West Lynn. They had the Old Time Parade and much activities. I had a very talented driver assist me from our Department of Transportation and I'm very thankful for that. And I was able to pass out my Tootsie Rolls, my, my candy that almost bears my name. And you know, it's funny, adults want those candies. Because remember, we all grew up with Tootsie Rolls. That's right, yeah. Today, I went out to Estacada to listen to the State of the City and there was a luncheon hosted by their chamber and Bennett Johnson is their president. The Mayor Brent Dogrell spoke about the accomplishments. And I tell you, you know, City of Estacada is only a population of 3,000, but they have done some remarkable work out there in improving their streets. They have one beautiful street with new sidewalks and updated the business and, and they used TIF financing, but, you know, evidently that wasn't too controversial. I was asking about it and the citizens felt it was more important to have improved infrastructure, but, you know, whatever. And it's the most beautiful street I think I've seen in Clackamas County, seriously. And it's the City of Estacada. And they're working on expanding and the growth, I think the mayor said they have two new subdivisions going in with 148 new homes. And he says Estacada's like the rest of the county, is a real shortage of affordable housing. You know, Estacada has a new library out there and what they're trying to do is find some funding for new sidewalks that go to the library, to the schools that they hope to serve because the kids walking on the road out there, it's a country road, deep dishes, gitches, no shoulders, so they're kind of working about that. But Don, I don't know if this tax to the cities can help with sidewalks or not, can it?
Yes.
Yes.
Which?
Barbara says yes. So maybe I'll give them a call back and say, well, if the tax passes, your share of the money, you can build some sidewalks out there and you won't need grant money. I'm hearing over back in there. Because I think the cities have a little bit more flexibility than the county does with, because we've made certain promises at the county. So that was fun. But it was a very good crowd of people out there. Their economic development has just taken off like crazy. In fact, they just hired a new Economic Development Manager for that little city out there and I was very proud of them and all the accomplishments that they've done. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard.
So, one thing about Damascus, I'd love to see the list of assets. We did talk about that one structure that maybe the search and rescue group could use along with some of our equipment storage that we sometimes have to take up to the mountain or gravel piles and things like that would be very helpful. Estacada's Safari Club's still there?
Yeah.
It is.
Is it?
Empty.
Yeah. 148 new homes out there. I don't know if you watch much remodel stuff, but, you know, in Texas, there's a lot of affordable homes. I mean, amazing.
I don't think I can be a county commissioner from Texas.
No, no, you probably couldn't. Damascus still is a place and a, a place with a long history. I remember the, it wasn't the World's Fair, but it might have been the State Fair was out there when I was a kid and they had a giant wax candle.
Yes, they had.
That had been collected by all the citizens during the Depression, if I remember right. I'm not really sure about that because I was really little because I barely remember it. But I remember going out there. You know, the marijuana issue, we, we did promise that we would sit down and talk about what is in the ordinance. And, and I think it'd be a good idea to get a task force back together. The fencing thing, which I mentioned before, and we kind of forgot when we got to that. Like to take a look at that. And then I thought that, and that some of the property line issues that only certain sizes of structures could be on, within one property. I know that was an industrial, discussion on industrial, but something that we, we need to look at a little bit. I know that EFU is almost totally out of our hands and some of the risk, I guess. You know, I had an opportunity to talk to a business, a city yesterday and they were telling me that, you know, in the industrial area, the average marijuana grower in a 40,000 square foot building has 40 employees and all of them make a minimum of $15 an hour. And they're, and that's now, that's before the minimum wage increase. So it's hard to say no. And it is a concern to me. And, you know, also there have been marijuana people, growers that have reached out and said they have issues and I haven't had an opportunity to find out what those are, but I don't know what they are. I know one. One is the, on EFU, one of the marijuana growers has to spend all this money to produce so many decibels and their neighbor has a well that when they start it up, it's like 400 decibels. And it's really loud and it runs all day long when they're watering their fields. So, it, it's kind of funny, you know, that, that's something we might want to talk about is, is when you're out in EFU and your neighbors are a long ways away. We certainly can't regulate the farmer. But, you know, it seems pretty inconsistent at the same time to require hundreds of thousands of dollars put in noise suppression when the neighbor has a huge well that pumps all day long. But, you know, I also, I live on RRFF5 and, and on the way home, I want one of those packets because I'll drive by that big marijuana grow that's being put in. And I drive that road every day and I haven't noticed it, so I, I guess I got to pay attention, but with an address, I can locate it. And some, one of my neighbors said there was a big marijuana grow. So it's been, you know, 15 years ago on the gas tax, we started talking about how to fund road maintenance at C4. And we worked really hard on, on vehicle registration fee. At the time, we could have just enacted gas tax, but the legislature changed that. And so, we, we had an opportunity one time to have done something and the Commission at the time, and I wasn't here, so I don't remember that much about it, was not really active in supporting that tax. And I think this Commission has committed to reaching out to the community, make sure that they understand the value of this gas tax and, and what it could save future generations in road maintenance. So, I look forward to that discussion. And one other thing, we have to look at, I drove Sunnybrook and Sunnyside yesterday and the center things are a mess. I don't know how we're going to resolve that because it's life-threatening if you're out there pulling the weeds, but there's got to be some way we can address that. The trees are great and they, they really make it great, but controlling those weeds, which in some cases are almost as big as the trees, there's got to be a solution. Just knocking the weed down, weeds down does not solve the problem. They come back. Believe me, I've been doing that for two years in my ranch. And so, we got to look at some way to fund or manage that process. And I know I did drive near Hope, New Hope Church and they were actually working in the center of the roadway. But boy, I'll tell you, it was scary looking. I, I wouldn't necessarily want to be out there pulling weeds or doing what they need to do, but there's got to be a way to keep that down. It might be chemical, but first they got to get rid of the weeds and then they got to treat it or cover it with something to prevent weed growth. Anyway, that's all I have.
No, you don't.
Look in front of you.
Oh, look in front of me. Where'd that dog go? Thank you, Mary. Missy is dreaming of a new home. She is a little shy right now. Has this lovely shelter, has this lovely shelter just isn't the same as home. Once she goes outside for a walk, she becomes much more animated, playing with balls and there's some, and sometimes she really likes to do that. She knows how to walk on a leash and seems to be polite around other dogs. Once you meet her, her sweet nature will win your heart and she'll be yours forever. For more information about Missy and other adorable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. A moment of silence right now, that's 50 decibels without me saying a word. So, 50 decibels is really pretty quiet and I appreciate in the country, but the wind out there right now is producing more than 50 decibels. I'll just mention that. You know, we had an employee recognition luncheon this week and we, we have this every quarter and it's really great to see the longevity of our employees here at Clackamas County. They come here, they work here, they like it here and they stay here until their retirement. Mass, masses of people that have worked here 20, 25, 30 and even 35 years. So kudos to our employees for finding out that Clackamas County is a great place to work, live and play, but especially the work part. We have outstanding employees and the, the turnaround, we've talked about it before, in the next five years, I think some 45% of our people become eligible for retirement. So there will be some changes. So if you know somebody who wants a great job with a great organization, please turn them on to our website and they can find some great jobs there. I also went to the old town, old, the West Lynn Old Time Fair Parade. I had a little funky golf cart that I usually drive around and I had two buckets of candy. While I was away, Tuee Smith and her driver came and raided the Tootsie Rolls out of my five gallon buckets. They didn't, she's got those little shorties, I had the long ones and man, she went through my bucket, took almost all of them.
Please?
So, what's that?
Did you call the police?
Yeah. That would have been a sight, wouldn't it? You know, I went to JPAC this morning, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. This is, this is organized by Metro and a lot of city representatives there. And the subject at hand was the Southwest Corridor. Now, we all remember the Orange Line and, you know, some people could say that was a tremendous success, but it displaced a ton of businesses, cost an orderly large amount of money and obligated our federal gas flex funds for many, many years. I told Metro what I'm going to tell you is that in Clackamas County, every two years we survey people to see what their concerns are, what their top reasons are to be concerned. And for years and years and years, it was always public safety. This year, congestion rose to the top and there's a reason for that. It's worse and worse and worse exponentially. Every six months it changes. You know, we all know the bottleneck of I-205, 37 mile freeway and 5.9 miles is two lanes in each direction. That's us. And it's been ignored by Metro and thank goodness our federal delegation got it on a high priority list, but they didn't include the funding. So when they got to vote on the Southwest Corridor, I, on behalf of the Commission, voted no. $2.5 billion. I say again, there are four main choke points in the Portland metropolitan area. They are 217, 205, the Rose Quarter and the Boone Bridge, if you've ever driven south through Wilsonville. It's abysmal and nobody's doing a darn thing about fixing those problems, but lip service. Now, from the federal government, from local and state funds, will come $2.5 billion to build another light rail. Now, I appreciate that it fluctuates from nine to 11, 12% of people that use this line, but they're heavily, heavily subsidized. As an example, West Line that runs to Wilsonville, for every rider, we subsidize 12 bucks that, so that trip is cheap for the rider, but it's not cheap for us. So I was proud to vote against that and let them know that they need to change their ways. Will Metro change their ways? Likely not. But I'll, I'll be glad to be the lone voice in the wilderness to remind them that we have particular needs here in Clackamas County and frankly, they're being ignored. The, I have some information on the next Town Hall, coincidentally, and Mary's going to put that up here. A Town Hall, we've decided to have a theme on these next two Town Halls, the only ones we're doing this calendar year. It'll be on fuel tax, marijuana tax, set for August 3rd at West Lynn High School. Now, the marijuana tax is a prudent thing to do. We're not sure of the total revenue we'll get from that, but 3% would be used, we're proposing, for public safety, code enforcement and law enforcement, and also for health needs that may arise out of the, the usage of marijuana in our county. We'll hold that Town Hall at the West Lynn High School, starting at 6:00 p.m. on August 3rd. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend. This event is an opportunity for all county residents and stakeholders to ask questions directly to the Commissioners. Discussion will focus on the two ballot measures proposed by the Commission for the November election, the fuel tax and marijuana tax, excuse me. I have asked, especially after the Oak Grove one. have asked, especially after the Oak Grove one, uh, town hall, that Mr. Crutt be there because there is a great deal of information, of course, that the Commissioners have, cause we've been, uh, informed regularly on these two issues. However, there's nothing like having our top professional there, uh, with the information in hand so that we can answer people's questions on the spot and not, not say, we'll get back to you. So I think we've put you on notice. Right, Don, you're going to be there for us? Well, I appreciate that. So ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you. This is a lot of people for a Thursday night and they stuck with us. Thanks for doing that. There being no further business before the Clackamas County Commission. This day, this meeting is adjourned.